Good evening. I'd like to welcome one to the regular city council meeting of Wednesday, August 16, 2023. Let the record show all councilors are present. Adds and deletes consent agenda number 21, add bids and quotes number 2B, add license and permits number nine, number 10, number 11, and number 12. Could I have approval of the agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Okay, we'll move approval of minutes. Approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council Meeting of August 2, 2023. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Approve the minutes for the Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting of August 2, 2023. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Approved council payable dated 8/11/2023. Checks number 175297 through 175415 in the amount of $1,339,633.96. Approved City 2. Approved City payroll for pay period ending 7/28/2023. Checks 168783 through 168789 in the amount of $566,905.30. Number 3. Approved the hire of Kaja Combs for the part-time PBA position within the Hibbing Police Department pending pre-employment contingencies. Authorized the posting for full-time skilled labor, auto truck driver in the sanitation department. Number 4. Number 5. Approved the updated marketing and communication manager job description. Number 6. Approved the MOU between the city Hibbing and Mape to add the position of marketing and communication manager and modify the recycling center's sanitary and sewer forming title to public works forming. 7. Authorized posting for full marketing and communications manager. 8. Approved the updated public work superintendent job description. 9. Authorized the posting for full-time public work superintendent. 10. Approved the updated public works form and job description. 11. Acknowledged the resignation of Nicholas Brown, patrol officer at the Hibbing Police Department, effective August 17, 2023. 12. Authorized the hire of Helen Ostman for the temporary full-time library specialist. 13. Authorized the posting for temporary full-time library technician. 14. Authorized the hire of Zach V. Alexander for the pan call firefighter position pending pre-employment contingencies. 15. Authorized the hire of Joseph McKinney for the full-time fleet manager position effective August 26, 2023. 16. Authorized posting of full-time equipment operator 2 for the city's LA department. 17. Authorized the hire of Teddy Levine for the full-time maintenance position with city service effective August 26, 2023. 18. Set a special meeting for Wednesday, August 23, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. The budget meeting that was previously scheduled will follow at City Hall in the Hibbing Council Chamber. 19. Set the next regular Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, September 6, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. 20. Set Hibbing City Call Workshop for Wednesday, September 6, 2023, following the Hibbing City Council Meeting at City Hall in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. 21. Adopt the 2022 City of Hibbing financial statement. Then we have approved at previous meetings, set the joint airport authority meeting with the Chisholm Hibbing Airport Authority for Monday, August 21, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room of the administrative office of the Range Regional Airport. Also authorized the Hibbing City Council to attend the ribbon cutting and open house for the Eye Clinic North on Friday, August 25, 2023 from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at 1311 East 34th Street in Hibbing. And lastly, set the budget working session for 8:23 and 8:30 beginning at 5:00 p.m. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. We move on to public forum. We have one who has reached out, Dimitri. You have the mic. It's basically a five-minute limit. We can listen. I will time it. You got your finger for five minutes if you want. I'll let you know when it gets close, but I appreciate you for being here tonight. Could you state a full name and address?
Absolutely. My name is Dimitri Karhalios. My address is 2611 Third Avenue East here in Hibbing, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Thank you, and if it pleases the council. My name is Dimitri Karhalios. As I said before, I'm a lifelong resident of Hibbing. And as many of you know, my family has been in business here in historic downtown Hibbing since the early 70s. I come here today not for any business interest, nor to campaign for any political office. I come here today as a citizen of the greatest city in Minnesota, Hibbing. When I think of my hometown, there's a few things I think of. One of them, a marching band every morning in the summer practicing through the streets. The second one being the high school attached to them. And third, being this building that we're standing in right now. It's not just the amazing art murals that we have in here, or the hand craftsmanship that adornst every part of this building, but it's also the grounds. And tonight, I had asked the council to think of the grounds. We have, as a community, have collectively insisted in the past on multiple occasions that these grounds are special. From our very own Statue of Liberty, standing proudly in a community that was fueled by immigrants working in the ore mines, to our Centennial Fountain, which our own residents donated generously. And last and not least, our Memorial Garden, honoring those from this community who lost their life in a horrific plane crash in 1990. This place means a lot to many people in this community, of which I'm one of them. For these reasons, among many more, I am for saving Hibbing City Hall. Counselors, I urge you to do anything you can. Find a solution, find funding, use every breath you have to fight for this historic building and grounds, because it is a part of our identity as a city and as a people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. Just the one today, so thank you so much for your words and thoughts. Thank you. All right, we will move on to levy presentation, starting with Jackie Prescott from Housing and Redevelopment. Good evening, Jackie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks for having me here today. I'm here today to talk about our levy that we're asking for. A little bit of background, I'm sure you all know, but I always to preface that. We were established in 1947 through a charter of the city of Hibbing. We actually are the fourth housing authority in the state of Minnesota, so it just goes to show how innovative Hibbing was even back in May. We currently have 252 units of public housing that are split across four complexes. Our family complex, the Greenhaven Apartments, began construction in 1952, and the capital needs continue to overwhelm our organization. This complex is our top priority for redevelopment. To give you a little bit of information on how our move to wellness program is going, as you all know, we launched that in January of 2022. The average income of residents in 2022 was $13,000. Here we are a year later at $14,400. So that's a 10% increase in our resident population's income, which is quite significant when you're looking at those numbers. I have four really great, I tried to trim it down to three, but I couldn't, I couldn't find three or one to get rid of of the four. So we have one family who's in our MTW program. He was a single fam, a single father with three children residing at the Greenhaven. He moved in in January of 2020. His goal was always homeownership. He had been saving money for a down payment on a home, but wasn't aware that debt and arrears would hold him back, no matter how much money he had put down on the home. He was educated through our MTW program in financial literacy. Realizing the outstanding loan debt in arrears was his main obstacle in financial independence and obtaining his own home. After extensive financial coaching and working with creditors, this father of three increased his credit score to qualify for a home loan, and has since purchased his first home and is no longer residing at the HRA. Family number two was a married couple with three children. The father here had two past felonies from errors made as a young adult over 15 years ago. Through our MTW program, we were able to work with him to get through the expungement process. His record was completely expunged, and he is now a full-time union employee who is on his way to ownership. Our third family is a married couple who resided at the HRA since 2014. They worked sporadically over the years. The mother's original goal was to pursue social security disability due to perceived physical limitations. Through coaching sessions and encouragement of our MTW coordinator, she recognized her self-worth in helping others. She obtained full-time employment as of August 2022. She has since received a promotion, is now certified as a mental health professional due to the number of hours working in this field. Her rate of pay increased, allowing them the resources to purchase their first home this summer. And our final story is a actual third-generation HRA resident. Through working with our MTW programming with the support of our coordinator, was able to gain the confidence to realize her potential and is certified in the medical field. She has enough self-confidence and self-esteem to follow through on goals she thought were unattainable for her. And she has plans to pursue her bachelor's degree. She will be the first in her family to do so. She is motivated to be a positive role model for her little brother. So, as you can see, there's a lot of good that comes out of some of the programming that we've done, and what we really want to do is continue to increase the quality of life for our residents. We have many other instances of people that we've helped that were underemployed that have since started working, but essentially, there's a lot of great resources and things that we're doing here. And if you recall, we are part of a test pilot through HUD, so we're one of 32 small PHAs across the nation that are doing this. So anyway, that's a little bit about what we're doing. I wanted to kind of let you know where, what we're doing now, or working on. We partnered with the city of Hibbing and Minnesota Housing Partnership to launch our housing needs assessment and study. We intended to launch the study in February, but due to the funding sources and delays in contract signatures, it didn't launch until May. On Tuesday, I actually received a call from Maxfield telling me that they were completely shocked by the rate of participation in the survey and all the surveys they've done. They've never had this many people participate, and we're only halfway through about 340 residents in the city. So we have another week to go. To me, that tells us, A, we're doing something right, getting the message out, and most importantly, the residents in the community have something to say about housing. So I just think having so much input shows so much about our community as a whole. Maxfield did let us know that they intend to have the draft study ready by the end of September. So another exciting thing going on in our community, and thank you to the city of Hibbing for your assistance in keeping this going. Through other partnerships with the city, Betsy and I have been working towards a housing trust fund. Minnesota Housing Partnership kind of leads the TA or the technical assistance on that. I actually had a conversation with them yesterday, and they're going to have a training at NARO Conference in September, which I'll be attending. So I have a thought I'll leave for the city council to look at that MHP just came through. Kind of, essentially, the community gets to lay out the priorities. I know one thing that we've talked about, Betsy and I, is the sewer lateral project. That could be something. The housing trust fund would help get accomplished for our residents. So it's not necessarily just one particular population. The community gets to look at what the needs are and take it from there. So that's a really exciting thing. And then my real reason for coming here today is to let you know about our redevelopment. We have recently reconvened with Center City Housing on our partnership and looking at what we want to do initially. Our last tax credit project, we were trying to do the whole complex once. We scored very high, and MHFA said, wow, great job. We love your project. We don't have the money. So we have decided that we're going to work to have two separate projects, two separate pieces of land. As you know, the Greenhaven has a lot of property back there, so essentially, we would move 50 units to another tract of land. And what I would like to do is have them be two singular buildings, because if you look at it right now, there's 23 buildings. That's 23 roofs, and that's, I don't even know how many doors, because some doors, some units have eight doors on them. So I think looking at long-term, how that would go for us, just way more sense, even when you look at the security of the building, maintenance, all of that. So, Betsy and I have been looking at different tracts of lands potentially. We need at least five acres to get that done. So I do see some potential parcels of land that would work for us, and you know, also keeping in mind what would suit the community best. So as we move forward, I'll continue to update the council, and Betsy could update you meetings on what that looks like. But to give you some perspective of what it looks like to get a tax credit project off the ground, our last application we went for, it cost the HRA $100,000 just to get to the table with an application. Because of our levy, we used that, we were able to use our lever money to get there. It was a couple of years levy compiled to get there, but that's essentially what we used our levy for, things like that. We used it to fund incentives for the housing study and the advertising and things like that that aren't in my five-year plan that HUD allows us to spend our money on. So it gives us a lot more flexibility to be creative in our levy. And then just to give you an idea, the way the Minnesota State statute is set up, we are actually eligible for about $180,000 in tax levy, but we are only going to ask for the 50 again this year until we come before the council with a project that we want to partnership. So that in a nutshell is kind of where we're at and what we're looking to do. So I would be happy to answer any questions anyone may have on that.
Jackie, I want to thank you first by starting with success stories of what you do there, important to our community, and then going into your proposal for tax levy. But that being said, councilors.
I do.
Yes.
Yes, Jackie, thank you so much for your comprehensive overview there. I am hoping that you're going to come back and with the council after your survey is done and present your findings.
Yes.
We could be probably looking at that in October, so.
Yeah, late September and October.
October. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions?
I have one. Jackie, you were talking about the Greenhaven buildings. Was my hearing right, like you want to eventually build new ones?
Yes. Yes. Those were actually built in 1952. They started construction, and it's just many years of extreme weather and, you know, limited resources. And quite frankly, when you're renting something, it tends to take a greater hit than if it's homeownership. So.
What would be the plan for the current ones if you were to relocate and rebuild?
Well, we looked at a couple of options. One would be potentially to sell the land off that's remaining for homeownership for someone to build there, or if, you know, we would keep the city in the loop, what they wanted to see. It could essentially be commercial property. We know that the land value back there is very high, but it could be that half of the units are moved somewhere else and then half stay. But right now, having 102 families in a three-block area is, it's just too much of a concentration. And the current model just does not fit our, our community. If you've been through there, you'll see there's a fire lane that runs right through the middle. We actually had to close all those gates because we were having people using them as roads and children and dogs, you know, play in there. So, but yeah, we're looking at revitalizing that neighborhood completely.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
So Jackie, what I heard you say is you're looking at a new site and shutting those down, or turning that property back over to the city, not building new units in that location?
Well, it depends, because when we apply for tax credits through Minnesota Housing, it depends what their priorities are. Thing that's, that's very desirable about that area is it's in an opportunity zone, so that helps our rents. The other thing is, you know, looking at the scoring. Ununfortunately, with MHFA, they score us the same as they do the Twin Cities. If the council were, that was actually my fourth tax credit project that we went for. One of the first ones, we wanted to do right across from Vic Power Park, but according to MHFA scoring, it was too far out, which, you know, doesn't make sense to our community, but don't set the priorities. So that changes. But most definitely, should that land be vacated, we would look to the city to partner on how to most effectively use that source of land.
Counselors, anything else? Thank you, Jackie. I really appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move forward on to Karen Seamer, Chisholm Hibbing Airport Authority.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, also for tonight. I know we're meeting next week, but.
Yes, Harry, it's, it'll carry.
But appreciate the opportunity to come in and just kind of show you what we're going to be talking about next week. And I think Candy did also print off some, some slides. So when I first started at the Airport Authority in, in 2008, our budget presentation consisted of one paper, one piece of paper that listed the revenues and expenses for the year. And as you can see from the packet, it's grown quite significantly as, as we've been asked to provide more, more information on, on the airport operations. So I just want to touch on a few things. Couple of projects that we operate, our capital improvement project, which is reviewed by both the FAA and our, and our MinDOT Office of Aeronautics. We have a meeting with them next week to look at funding for some projects. But one that we're looking at for 2024 is to rehabilitate Hangar C, which is the LifeLink hangar, built originally in 1940, and now housing LifeLink Air Medical. That would just consist of exterior paint and fixing of that building to keep it, to keep it in good shape. The other one is a tack lane that serves six T-hangers and leads back to Midwest Aircraft Refinishing, which is one of our newer tenants, that does aircraft refurbishing, mostly of Cirrus aircraft, very, very successful. Glad they are called Range Regional Airport Home. The last one is a taxi lane in a tie-down ramp area. So those are some of the projects that we're looking for in the near term. So we're programming funding for those at this moment. Just a little bit more detail on the LifeLink hangar. It's right off Highway 37. We got a cost estimate of about $100,000. Looking at multiple sources of funding, including local share from the airport, IRRB, and MinDOT Aeronautics. Last time that we did anything with this building was 2011 and 12, when LifeLink, when we rehabilitated that hangar for their operations. The next one that shows a picture of the apron out in front of the, one of the Midwest Aircraft hangers. It's just really starting to show its age. When they repaint these aircraft, they really are spectacular. They're small aircrafts, but they, they are very costly and come with a very elaborate paint scheme. And so when you have pavement that is creating what we call FOD, foreign object debris, and propeller spinning, we certainly don't want to be damaging any of those aircrafts. So we would redo that and then a T-hanger lane back to them. That project is 930,000. We have some bill funding by infrastructure law funding. That's going to, that we will use a majority of 90% of, on that project, and also have a application with the IRRB for, for a share as well as MinDOT Aeronautics. So again, that supports, that T-hanger lane supports six hangers, as well as Midwest Aircraft Refinishing with their three buildings that they lease from us, and I think they're up to about 14 employees now. I just show some of the, kind of the conditions of, of that pavement, well beyond its useful life. Typical FAA funding for, for that type of asphalt just falls really low on the priority list and usually never, it gets hard to get down to. So it's a good utilization of that bill money to start maintaining and managing those pavements. The next one is what we call Taxiway Alpha. It's one of our primary taxiways. This, this project is estimated at $2.5 million. It's going to require some underground drainage improvements, as well as a large aircraft tie-down area. We will be seeking utilizing a million of our airport improvement entitlement funding for that, and we'll be seeking some discretionary money from the FAA as, as well. And again, we have some applications from the IRRR, really trying to keep our local share at zero. So any local share will come out of what's called our passenger facility charge account. It's the ticket prices. It's the $4.50 you pay on a ticket. We'll use that to make up our local funding. So that pavement is analyzed by the state every couple of years. Currently, it's rated in poor, poor condition. Just kind of shifting gears here, scheduled airline service, our, we're an essential air service market, meaning the carrier has a contract with the federal DOT for two years to provide our, our scheduled air service, and that will be going out for bid probably right after the first of the year. It expires on May 30th of 24. So we're having lots of conversations with our current partner, SkyWest, shared some Facebook posts and, and other things, just to let people know that the airline obviously had to make some pretty significant changes. Our flight times, as of late, we lost that early morning departure, which really makes it challenging to leave and connect out of Minneapolis. This is all really being driven by the, the lack of pilots, specifically captains in the industry, such as, such a large amount took early retirement during COVID. And so the smaller regional carriers, their pilots are being absorbed by the, the mainline carriers at a very rapid rate. And so the carriers are, carriers like SkyWest and Delta Connections are, are really feeling that pain right now, and have reached out to the federal DOT to see, to see if they can reorganize in a way that would allow them to utilize pilots that exceed age 65. So a pilot at age 65 is put into forced retirement. And so in the FAA reauthorization bill this year, they're trying to increase that from 65 to age 67, which would, would give them a couple of years for the industry to kind of stabilize. So that, that's kind of out there. We, we're supporting everything that SkyWest and Delta Connections has done. They've done remarkable things, have been a great partner for the airport, and we want to continue to support them and their, and their service. That being said, Delta Airlines, who partners with SkyWest, informs SkyWest that they want to have first-class service at all their markets. They wanted to do that in July. Airports, airports, I'm talking about Brainerd, Bemidji, Hidden International Falls. We couldn't allow that to happen that quickly because we have to make, make some pretty significant changes to our airport security program to allow any aircraft of over 61 seats. So we've done that. It's being approved right now by the Department of Homeland Security. And right now, scheduled on October 9, they'll be serving Hibbing the CRJ 700 and 900 series aircraft. So it'll bring it from 50 seats to either 65 or 76 seats. So more seating capacity out of Hibbing. We'll still have our 12 weekly flights, and yes, still working on getting our early morning departure back from them. So. Kind of, kind of hit on this a little bit, that what, what SkyWest has done is they've asked for greater authority from the federal DOT. Right now, it is being contested by the Airline Pilots Union and some other groups, and it's all tied up into this FAA reauthorization. So what could happen if they get it is, SkyWest has already hired a great number of, of these retired pilots who still maintain their airline transport certificate. They will go through the full FAA medical instead of annually, quarterly. And, but at that time, what we're being told is the 50-seat jet will come back to our markets, but they can only fly with up to 30 seats. So that is one thing that we'll, could possibly see and, and change. There's really not a lot of other options out there for regional carriers that operate jets, but without SkyWest and the Delta Connections in, in whatever configuration of aircraft, the, what, what you could see is a single-engine, nine-passenger aircraft doing scheduled service to the cities. Questionable interline agreements, so it could make things challenging. So we, airports in the state and across the nation are, are, have reached out to our federal partners, letting them know that we support SkyWest and their endeavor. In no way is, is, I believe is a way that they're trying to circumvent anything safety-wise or modify the 1,500 hours of flight time that is, is currently required. They'll, they'll meet and exceed all those expectations. So. They'll, they'll meet and exceed all those expectations, so. We still have our Sun Country seasonal charters to Laughlin, Nevada. They just scheduled their first one for October fifteenth through the nineteenth. So tickets are still available last time I checked. So there's a website, a little plug for them. Those, those are fun charters. So we, the airport, do all the ground handling for those charters. So we check in the passengers, we load the bags, we unload them, we de-ice them and fuel them. SkyWest Airlines does not participate in those activities. So we found that, that we could do those effectively as long as they're not off it. It's just another hat that we, that we wear. This next slide shows our historical passenger deployments. Obviously the major dip towards the, the right was during COVID. Where we saw a significant drop, so much in two thousand and nineteen with our record deployments to near rec, near, you know, pre-two thousand and eight lows. And, but we made a nice steady climb out. It's, it's flattened out this year. This year we're on track, well, you know, their magic number that you hear me say is ten thousand deployments. You have to have that to maintain your primary status with the FAA and get that million dollars worth of entitlement. Falling below that, you get a hundred and fifty thousand. So pretty hard to maintain the facility with that pick of a change. So we're on track this year, just seeing some nice, steady growth. Hopefully as things stabilize in the airline world, those numbers will continue to grow. A lot of the rebound was, was leisure travel. And what we're hearing nationally, nationally is that the business travel is starting to rebound, but it's taken longer than initially expected. Some of our ongoing projects, if you drive down Highway thirty seven to the east of the airport, you'll see a lot of construction going on at the Detroit Reman Facility. We've entered into new twenty-year lease with Detroit Reman. That's an airport-owned, Airport Authority-owned building. We own the building and the land that it sits on, and we have a long-term lease with them. Funding came completely from a zero-interest loan from the IRRB. There's no airport money involved in this, but we are performing the construction oversight of it. So we have a construction manager at risk agreement with Max Gray Construction and our engineers, Reynolds Smith and Hills, RSNH overseeing the project. So all the funding comes through that one to the airport. We, we, we're the ones actually paying the contractor. So it's going to be a big hit to the, to the financials as far as long-term debt, but it, they're, they're a great part of that is just continues to grow. And the IRRB and the airport and communities want to keep, keep supporting them in their, in their growth, so. Earlier in the spring, if you drove by, you saw a mountain of concrete pipe laying out there. That's all now underground where it needs to be. We did a dramatic improvement to our underground stormwater drains to, to shed water. It was just undersized and, and very outdated. We also did a runway safety improvement, so the area of land around the actual pavement of the runway didn't quite meet FAA standards, and so we took care of those issues. It was just under a five million dollar project with a local share of about four point eight percent or two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So really maximize our, our federal dollars. MinDOT and IRRB also participated on that project. And that contractor was Yulin Brothers with RSNH overseeing it. So just a few punchless items remaining on that project and we'll have that one wrapped up. This next one is the new hangar that we completed and had the open house in July, I think. Time flies. That was a, that was a facility that, that the airport needed for, for a long time. Because we don't have any, every building is full with tenants and we don't have any hangers to accommodate the transient business and private aircraft as they come into our community. They'd rather put their aircraft inside a hangar than let it sit outside, especially in the winters. We, again, partnered with the IRRB and used our CARES and Carissa and different colors of COVID aid that we received. So it's about a fifty-fifty partnership with them with a two and a half million dollars, zero percent interest loan with the IRRB. Non-recourse loan. And so our annual payment is fifty thousand a year and then any revenues that exceed expenses on, on that facility. We have a new tenant there called Premium Air. They own two aircraft and will make, have made that aircraft available for private charter. They'll use the aircraft for their business needs as well, but it is also available. So a new tenant and a, a new, a new service and they're very happy to be here. So the reason we're here, kind of switching to our budget, just a, a kind of a breakdown of our, our budget total for twenty-four is just over three point one million dollars. The pie chart just kind of breaks out down our different revenue sources. Majority of it is that we own and operate the FBO or fixed base operator. So we're the only operation on the field that provides fueling service. So any aircraft fuel that revenue is brought into, to the airport. So, and then our, our rents. And like I said, currently all of our facilities are full, all of our T-hangers are full. And very simple, we are making some adjustments to, in twenty-four for our T-hanger leases, adding some, some adjustments to those rates and as well as other leases that come due. We always, you know, look at, look at those rates, but most of our leases are long-term. And so you, you can't, sometimes can't raise revenue fast as some of the expenses. The, it's on this slide, the proposed levy for twenty-four is seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight. And that would get us to a net zero budget. The next slide was our expenses, personnel expenses of just over a million. We, our personnel is made up of nine full-time, one part-time and one summer. I'm getting that right. We added a, a new full-time position into our airport maintenance. That will go into effect in mid-September. That was something that the airport had wanted to do for many years. So the, the additional increase to this budget over last year was about a hundred and forty thousand. That's some of it, so majority of it is the wages and benefit package for this additional full-time person. And what that will do is get me out of the snowplow. So just something that we, as, as airports grow, adding more pavements, having three full-time maintenance people to take care of all the snow removal was just getting a bit burdensome. And, and sometimes not safe, especially after last winter. The rest of it just kind of breaks out our major cost, costs with our insurance and utilities. Our aviation fuel is about seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, we're estimating for, for next year's expense. But that's our, that's our main revenue generator. And loans, the loans payments that we have consists of the, the T-hanger, the Detroit Reman Facility. So we collect the, the debt revenue from Detroit Reman and reimburse that back to the IRRB and then now the hangar. That's just a quick slide of the, kind of the historic tax levy. Again, the dip in twenty-one and twenty-two. We were using some of our CARES and Carissa funds to offset the budget. And since we had that, that funding, the Airport Authority lowered the levy during those two years because of that. But the, the funding has been, is no longer. That's kind of all I had for that. The rest of the slides that I have, you have in your packet and that just really breaks down the historical revenues and expenses for the airport, looking at at least the five-year trends. Really, again, appreciate having me here tonight to kind of showcase what we'll be talking about next week. Give time to look through that. Feel free to reach out with any questions you may have, any numbers that, so I can be prepared to answer them either before or at our, at our meeting next Monday. But with that, I'll take any questions. So there's.
Yes, Barrett, thank you so much. When the airport was closed for that month, how did that impact your deployments? Because you're projecting, you're on schedule for the ten thousand to receive that federal funding, funding. So was there a big dip or anything?
There was, there was about a seven hundred passenger decrease that month for, for those twenty days. So we ended up, I believe, at about three hundred and sixty-five revenue passengers that month. And typically it's nine hundred to eleven hundred on an average month. So yeah, there was a, there was an impact there, but specifically it was landing fees that we lost out on and that passenger facility charged for those tickets. We weren't collecting during those twenty days, but weather cooperated very well. We actually opened the runway a day early, so. The contractor, and it was, it was well-designed and will suit the needs of the airport for, for many years, so.
All right, in the future, we just talked about, you know, the improvements on the old hangar and the new one we just built. Besides runways and overlays, what is, what other projects do you foresee? Maybe even where RE/MAX is, because I know you have additional properties there. Is there anything that's in, in the future being talked about?
Yeah, there, our, our capital improvement list looks out twenty years. And really you have to look at the five-year, I mean, that's what you're focusing on. The rest is kind of more just scheduled pavement maintenance and things. The biggest project that we'll have going into probably twenty-six and seven is the actual run itself, which was rehabilitated in two thousand and ten. We crack seal and seal coat that every other year, every third year, just to maintain that as long as we can. But eventually about that timeframe, we're going to be looking at designing, design for a major rehab of that runway. That's going to be a, a challenge because one primary runway is going to have to get closed for a period of time. The FAA does allow, under extreme circumstances like that, that's outside of the airport's control, if you down below the ten thousand, they, they do have the ability to give you a waiver because of that event. But not only looking at rehabilitating it, but on the airport master plan and layout plan, it, it has shown an extension for, for many years to, from about, we're just under sixty-eight hundred feet, but extending it out to seventy-two to seventy-four hundred feet to, to the south.
I, I know that's been talked about for years and that's, that's why I was wondering if that might be part of your.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big project and it'll be something that I discussed this coming Monday with the FAA and MinDOT. So they're aware because those are, those are big dollars and we'll, we'll definitely need to go after discretionary funding to make that happen.
Very good. Counselors, any other questions? Barrett, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Look forward to meeting with you all and.
We'll see you on Monday.
On Monday.
Okay, we'll move on to department committee reports. First up is Community Development Director, Abciol Alante.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My first item tonight is a request for council action to approve Miriam Caro as an independent contractor to write applications for the following grants. First one is for the Minnesota Historical Society State Capital Projects Grant in Aid, County and Local Preservation Grant Program, which will be for grant funding for priority items identified for city hall renovations. Second one would be for the Minnesota DNR Relief Community Forestry Grant, which would be used for, to expand the tree inventory that was started several years ago and create a management plan beyond the ash trees here in the, in the city and add the rest of our tree inventory to that management plan. And then the third grant is the National Endowment for the Humanities, Public Humanities Project Grant, which is to look at the exhibition space inside the newly constructed Mine View Buildings. The total for the independent contractor to write those three grants is eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, which would come out of the general fund forty-six, sixty-five hundred, four thirty-one line item. The budget and fiscal impact outside of spending those funds is for staff time to work with Miriam to provide the necessary information to write adequate grant applications for those three projects. And at this time, I'd stand for any questions.
I wish, I wish is you're asking for this resolution or not resolution, but to approve this contract. We'll do that first and then we'll get to the question.
Yes.
Hearing what Ms. Alante had to say.
Make a motion to approve.
We have make a motion by Counselor Bayless. Support by Counselor Swiberger. Any discussion?
This is, this is just a minor little thing, but maybe moving forward to disclose what the dollar amount is on the agendas. I think the other department heads do that, so it's kind of helpful to have that since we don't have all the paper documentation like we used to in the past.
Yes, so noted. You made that request at my EDA meeting on Monday and yes, that's why it's handwritten in here for tonight. And in future, it will be right on the RCA.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B, Betsy.
Excellent. So item B is to offer resolution twenty-three oh eight oh five, authorizing the City of Hibbing to approve the Wabtec Corporation request to continue the tax abatement and business subsidy agreement by and between the City of Hibbing and L and M Radiator, Inc. and L and D Masabi LLC, since the acquisition is now complete. So this is identified as part of the core strategy in the two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan, engaged in forward-thinking leadership, transparent and collaborative local government. Wabtec Corporation of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania purchased L and M Radiator as a wholly-owned subsidiary on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. L and M Radiator continues to operate as a viable, ongoing business entity in the City of Hibbing and as such is continuing to fulfill their obligations under this agreement. The community development staff at this time is recommending the council approve this resolution to continue the business subsidy agreement due to the fact that section three point six of that original agreement did not offer right of assignment for this situation. It required city authorization.
Hearing what Ms. Alante had to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three oh eight oh five.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Salkman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Faso. Any discussion? Betsy, just so everybody knows, this is when the city worked with their expansion at L and M, when they built their whole new facilities a few years ago.
Yes.
So that agreement with them at that time.
Yes.
Just so everybody understands, that's why it's tied into that new construction.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I concede.
So at this time, I'm offering resolution number twenty-three oh eight oh six, an interfund loan resolution to create a development capital fund for Howard Street blocks and add a million dollars to the current land acquisition fund within the city. This is part of the two thousand and twenty-three City Strategic Plan High Priority Goal Number Two, to implement a plan and program to revitalize Howard Street that was designed by the City Council and staff in April of two thousand and twenty-three. In recent work for the creation of the HITA Board's new redevelopment program in the downtown district, we undertook an assessment of the buildings. This assessment showed that there are several substandard or dilapidated buildings in the downtown area, some of which are concentrated in a couple of key blocks. In an effort to revitalize these blocks and spur new development, community development staff is requesting the creation of a redevelopment fund and the passage of the interfund loan resolution, track all costs associated with exploring the redevelopment of these key blocks in the downtown. Additionally, the redevelopment work may include site acquisition to allow for land assemblage or potential redevelopment. Thus, we are also requesting additional funds to be added to the land acquisition fund for this purpose. So the board and committee action that we're requesting tonight is to approve the allocation of five hundred thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance in the general fund to create a way to pay for the pre-development costs and track expenses in our finance department. Further, I would recommend turning over the management of that fund and project to the HITA Board with regular reports back to the City Council as the work progresses. The fund would be named number four eighteen redevelopment capital project fund. And at this time, I would, Sheena and myself stand for any questions on that part of this request.
This one is Howard Street, First Avenue is open on this one, also, or is it just solely Howard Street?
This is the 400 block on Howard Street to look at potential redevelopment.
So Betsy, help me under, help my memory here. I thought it was $250,000 and you were going to go for a match. My triple RV and then you're going to try another 250 or leverage that money for, with deed.
This is a completely separate program.
Totally different than this. Okay, so back to John's question, it's just the historical part of Howard Street?
It is just the 400 block and two other buildings on Howard Street.
So between 4th and 5th Avenue East.
So what are the two other buildings?
Directly north of City Hall.
This is in direct relation to the ACE Hardware Building.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, and then let me read the rest of that. The reason I'm pausing for questions is there's a lot in this resolution. So approve, the second part then is to approve allocation of the $1 million from the unassigned fund balance to the land acquisition fund. Now, this is something that Sheena has in the balance sheet and she will explain that. And all land acquisition will be facilitated by the HITA Board with regular reports back to the council. The budgetary and fiscal impact is listed below on this request for council action that's in your packet. And it talks about the, the funds that I've, or the costs that I've researched thus far. So the, the various aspects of this pre-development would include municipal advising. Sheena and I have been talking to three different municipal advisors and receiving some proposals for how we could work with them on a project like this. We've been talking to a couple of different legal counsel on this. And just to see what our options are, we've been talking to LHB Architects because they will do the actual physical building assessment for a project like this. And they are the gold standard in the state of Minnesota. We need to do some title and survey work. We would need to do phase one environmental assessment work. We would need to do demo survey and demo estimates. And we'll need some technical assistance for this project along with consulting from Streeter Consulting to make sure that we're following the process for this particular project, the correct steps. We've been talking about the ACE Hardware Building for quite some time and then taking steps to get things in the right alignment and to be able to proceed with a potential demolition as we've watched that building deteriorate and do some shoring up mechanisms with our building official here in the community. And so these are the next steps to get prepared for a potential redevelopment of that block. And at this time, I would ask for a resolution to, to pass this and then move forward with any discussion.
Hearing what Ms. Olavanti had to say regarding resolution for tax abatement, or resolution for, uh, inter-fund loan resolution, I'm sorry, to create redevelopment cap fund. Wishes of the council.
Should approve.
Most approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion?
One quick.
Yeah.
Do you, is there a potential target date in mind of, for that building to come down?
We've been kind of gaining that scenario up and right now we're looking at late winter, early spring. I'm hoping to, you know, if things go well and the demo assessment goes fine and there's not a lot of abatement that we need to do and all those sorts of things, it could be, you know, midwinter. But we are also collaborating with the county on some discussions around some of the buildings that they have in the same area. So trying to coordinate as much as we possibly can, also looking at the potential for deed grants to help with the demolition and that redevelopment fund because they have those funds available as well. So this is the first step and then I will start seeking outside funding, which will then be added to this capital project fund to offset our costs as we go forward.
Okay, and I'm guessing it was shored up? I know we talked about that.
Yes, it was.
It's safe now?
Mm-hmm, and our building official says that he thinks it's, it's fine enough to get through that timeframe to allow for all of that to happen. Once we do demo it, we have three years to create a potential redevelopment TIF district in that area. And then past creating that redevelopment TIF district, then from there we have five years to certify projects under that and move forward. So we do have a little bit of a timeframe, but also that building isn't, you know, going to stand for too much longer, but I don't want to take it down too soon and lose some days while I'm looking for projects and redevelopment potential. So trying to time it all out is, is what we're doing here.
So, thank you, thank you. So Betsy, are there any outstanding legal issues with that bill? Is everything taken care of and complete now?
I will turn that question over to Attorney Borland at this time. As far as I know, we have site control to do this, but.
Mayor, members of the council, Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. So the city and city administrator specifically is the, a special person representative for the estate that still owns that building. And that's, it's coordinating through, what Ms. Olavanti is trying to accomplish still has to be coordinated through that the representative being the city administrator would have to sell the building to a developer and coordinate the, they can't coordinate the demolition. But that part nuance would have to still be worked into that if it's sold to a developer after it's taken down.
Okay, good. Thank you for the update. Thank you.
Betsy, one thing I want to add so people understand, that, this, or this block is our number one priority for you to start for redevelopment for downtown. It's, we're looking at the whole downtown for redevelopment, but this is our number one priority as it is our toughest block within our 12-block order.
Well, and there's a concentration in that particular block, so yes. You have to meet some fairly strict statute requirements of over 50% of dilapidated and, and substandard. It's not something that you can just say, well, that building doesn't look all that great, let's take that one down. That's not how it works. You have to meet some fairly strict requirements, which is why we have to bring in architects that do this kind of work specifically and, and can help us, you know, walk through that part of the, the process and, you know, other technical assistance.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
This one more.
Yes.
Counselor. Do you have any, have you had any interest in that property there?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D.
All right, so item D then is to approve signing the agreements with the technical assistance folks that I just mentioned, Streeter Consulting, LHB, and the municipal advisor for phase one of that redevelopment block. And the preliminary budget is in, in that RCA from the prior item. But I think it's important to look at those items and, and recognize what we're looking at spending the funds on and sign the agreements to get those items started.
Okay, we're looking for approval to assign agreements with Streeter Consulting, LHB, municipal advisor for phase one redevelopment. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, Chief Jankala. Oh, I didn't even see you back there. Chief?
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Mayor and Council. The first thing that I have for council action tonight is actually going out for RFPs for the nine warning siren system for the city. With the assistance of Sheena and Engineer Story, we are ready for going up for RFPs. Our current system is obsolete. It doesn't work. It's not going to work. And it costs way too much money to even try to fix it. It's cheaper to start over. This RFP would include the basic system in and of itself, the nine sirens, ancillary equipment such as power poles. All the poles need to be replaced. At, at the start of this project, I didn't know that poles had a lifespan. Working with our PUC and Stephanie at PUC, we can get those done in city for a lot cheaper than contracting them out. There's going to be a couple of different phases and blocks to this. This particular RFP is for the physical equipment that hangs on the towers or on the poles. The sirens, the transmitters, the receivers. I actually have a, a meeting tomorrow with SBA Towers from the Maple Hill Tower site. We're going to do, we have to do some radio work. That's going to set off the sirens in addition to the automated systems. It's going to be kind of like double, triple redundant. I did not include those into the RFP because the vast majority of that work is state bid stuff and we can get it done a lot cheaper than putting it on an RFP, on, on, on an RFP. So when this, when we publish this, this will be just for the physical siren equipment. And as we progress into the next phases and, and actually being able to set them off, I will be coming back to the council with different items that were, like I said, I, I didn't feel was appropriate to the RFP process. So at this time, we are ready to publish it.
All right, so Steve Jankala is looking to publish the RFP for the warning system for the city of Hibbing. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? I have one question. If, if everything falls in, what are we looking at for a timeframe, Chief, possibly?
Spring of '24.
Spring of '24, we would be operational?
Is our target.
Thank you so much.
Free weather season '24.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B.
The, the next thing that we have for you is to purchase one 28-volt super vac battery operated fan. We do have a couple of these. We're migrating away from our gasoline engine fans. We have a couple. They work really, really well. We're happy with them. Our, our extrication equipment, our tools, our sazals, everything runs on the same battery platform. So we're actually buying them with oat batteries because the problem with batteries, a lot of times we don't use them enough. So we have a platform that is compatible with everything else that we have. So this is a planned purchase in our small tools for '23 from Hyman Fire Equipment for $5,029.95. We have asked for several quotes. Hyman was the only one that got back to us.
Okay, hearing what Chief had to say regarding that whole pottery operated fan. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, Chief.
The next thing that we have is to purchase four SEEK thermal imaging cameras. Basically, in a nutshell, we have a small thermal imaging cameras about the size of an iPhone that hangs off of every air pack in every truck in our fleet. That way it gives every person, we have, we currently have the fleet situated, but we have four of them that are broken. And over the last four or five years, they, they just, they break, crawl around in fires and they break. So we just want to just replace those. Again, we'd have small tool equipment, '23 budgeted for these replacements. We did get several quotes, again, and MES, Metropolitan Municipal Emergency Supply was the only one to respond. Those four cameras and a charger for our new engine, one would be $2,595.
Hearing what Chief had to say regarding new cameras. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Ms. Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C.
The last one is one SEEK Attack Pro thermal imaging camera, and that's just basically a big one. We used to have a fleet of big ones. We don't anymore. We've kind of downsized. We, we just put them strategically. We have, I think, three or four big ones now. And we have one that we can't buy batteries for it anymore. It just needs to be replaced. So we also have this in a planned purchase in the '23 small tools. And we did get a couple of different quotes back, MES and the Fire Store. And MES was the cheapest at $2,714.99.
Very good. For support for charger municipal emergency services.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
By Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Move on to city engineer, Jesse Story.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from Tronco Electric to provide four Hito Plus LED lights at the Column Cemetery columbarium site. Currently, there is no lighting there, so you go there at night and it's very dark by the new, new site. The cost for the four lights is $18,000, $18,730. We have the option to add a GF CI outlet and a banner arm to each pole for an additional $200 for a total cost of $19,530. We do have $20,000 budgeted for this item for this year, so I'm asking council to approve the quote.
Hearing Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Jesse, just so everybody knows, this is columbariums that are between the building and loaves, correct?
Yes, this is the, on the new site.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Jesse, I know that I think it was in your 2024 budget, you're looking at a new columbarium. Well, these lights then, are we going to need more lights then when that is built then?
No, the slab will have a light on each corner of the slab. So it'll light up the, the entire thing. So once we have all eight columbariums in there, they'll all be lit up.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from Compass Minerals for the road salt for the upcoming season. The quote is in the amount of $82.74 per ton. This agreement is up to 450 tons. I think last year we used about 460. This quote, I, I received this yesterday. They said this will expire in 15 days. The cost is $37,233. We do have $36,675 budgeted in our public works operating budget. So I'm asking for council to approve me signing this, this contract with Compass Minerals so we can get our road salt.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say about road salt, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Move on to city service director, Mr. Rolle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The first thing I have before you tonight is to approve a change order at the Mine View Construction. This would be on the handrail design that is out over the edge of the pit. The, the decking that goes out over the pit. The current handrail design has a, I think it's like a four inch by six inch mesh. So mesh squares. So if you have kids out there, it's easy for them to climb up it. It does need code on that design, but we're asking to change order that to a smaller mesh so it's not as easily, easily to climb by kids and whatnot. And just a little safety feature, I guess, to try and prevent some, some climbing over the edge there on that. So the change, change order on it is $11,399.77. I'm looking for your approval on that.
Hearing what Mr. Rolle had to say regarding redesign of the handrail. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Nick had one question. That's where we have two, two actual elevated or can lever decks. He does take care of both buildings.
Yes, this would be on both buildings, just on those can lever decking areas.
Very good.
Hi, Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Bayless.
I'm just curious on the redesign. So you're talking, they're going to go smaller squares? Because that's.
Correct.
Does it make sense to even do that or should we even put something that's not climbable?
I mean, it's, it's going down to, I think it's like a one inch by one inch or whatever.
Tiny, tiny.
Yeah, yeah, smaller. Good.
Okay.
You could go to a, and maybe it'd be more expensive for that as well, I'm sure, just more material. But we are trying to keep it, still be able to look through it.
Yep.
For shorter people, but yet still try and not be able to climb it as easily.
Okay. Well, if you're confident with it, I'll, I'll trust that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B, Nick.
Item B is authorize a quote from Commercial Refrigeration Systems for a new oil separator on the curling club compressor. We had commercial refrigeration in last month, rebuilding one of our other compressors. And we brought up the issue of our curling club compressor was going through oil like crazy. We're going through gallons a week. We kept having to refill and refill and tripping out on low, low oil pressure and whatnot. And they checked the oil separator and it is, it is failing. So it is not filtering out the oil out of the ammonia that runs through it. It's supposed to filter out the oil and the oil goes back to the compressor and keeps the cycle going. So the oil is slipping through that and going into the, the chiller barrels. So it is something that we should take care of before we start up this season. We did save some money on our compressor reed, which we were there, so we used savings from that. We had $10,000 budgeted for there and it came in at about $7,000. So we'll use the excess there and then to make up the difference, we would take it out of our operating fund repairs to cover that balance, so.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Rolle had to say regarding rebuilding the oil separator for the curling club compressor. Wishes of the. Club compressor, wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand? Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if we can go back to the one of, can we just put a sign out there that says no climbing?
We will have those out there for sure.
Okay, hearing no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nothing for boards and commissions, licenses and permits. We'll move on, number one, approve the raffle permit application and request of Hibbing Chismucks Unlimited to hold their raffle on Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three at Boomtown Catering Android. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney, support by Councilor Fossil?
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Number two, approve the kennel, annual kennel license of Elizabeth Jones, four eight fifty Lincol Road. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Move on, number three, approve the special event permit application of Range Engineering Council to hold their STEM showcase on Friday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three at the Hibbing Memorial Building. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swiberger. Any discussion? I just got one thing to say, if no one's ever been at the STEM event, it's amazing what these kids come in and get to see from an engineering point of view, so if you have the opportunity to go see it at the Memorial Building, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. Hearing no other discussion, wishes of the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Number four, approve the raffle permit application and request of Blessed Sacrament Church to hold a raffle on Sunday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three at Blessed Sacrament. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Number five, approve the special event permit application of the Minnesota Deer Hunters to hold their annual banquet at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Wednesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Number six, approve the temporary on sale liquor license request of the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association to have Valentini's dispense liquor at their annual banquet on Wednesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-three at the Hibbing Memorial Building. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Number seven, approve the temporary on sale liquor license of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to have Sammy's dispense alcohol business after hours at the Fina Advertising at five twenty-two East Howard Street, Suite two oh five, on Tuesday, August ninth, twenty twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.